Mrs. Backo, Mr. Baccata, Mr. Sayak, Mr. Clark, Mrs. Esposito, Mr. Limbo, Mrs. Stratten, Mrs. Pratt, and Mr. Mackinon.
President's Board meeting has been in lieu of the public meeting.
Yes, it has, Mr. Mackinon.
Everybody please join me for a pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every being justice for all. Dr. Alfonso, we have some presentations this evening.
Yes, we do, Mr. Mackinon. I'm going to ask Mr. Brown to come up to assist me. Jessica, would you please come up? Is your coach here? I don't think she would be. She's probably having a child right now as we speak. But Mr. Brown and I will... And Mr. Mackinon, would you please come up as well? Jessica, we... Yes, please. We'd like to congratulate Jessica. I played basketball four years in high school. I think I scored about 55 points. All right? So just to give you an idea, I had a lot of assists but didn't score too much. But it's a great honor and to score...
Don't you read it. You have to read it.
Okay. This certificate of excellence is awarded to Jessica Kitres for outstanding athletic achievement in basketball, scoring 1,216 career points in Sable Wogan Memorial. Now, I did a little... What did you score? What year was it, freshman year? So it was freshman year. And what was your average your freshman year? How many points? 55?
Yes.
Okay. And then your sophomore year, how many did you average? Maybe 10?
15.
15? How about junior and senior?
18.
18 and about around 18. It really is a tremendous accomplishment, really. 1,216 points. And you guys had a great year this year. Mr. Brown, do you want to say a little something about Jessica?
No, you've got it all covered.
Mr. President?
As a big fan of Lady Farmer Sports, I definitely want to congratulate you. That's quite a feat. And I would say that I played basketball too, but I'm not going to... I've never played basketball. My congratulations are very...
Are you insinuating that you play?
I didn't say... I think you're going to confuse a bocci ball.
Thank you.
See, we really have to put our foot around the desk. I have another presentation. Ms. Bloom, would you please like to come up? And I see you have two of your trusty assistants with you. Since this is Art Month, Ms. Bloom was nice enough to want to show some of her artwork or her stained glass course. And, Ms. Bloom?
Good evening. These are two of the students that worked on this window. This is Shannon Connery and Samantha Mazer. Twenty or 25 students altogether that worked on it. Most of them were seniors, so they have left, graduated, moved on. These two ladies were juniors, so they're still here, so I hunted them down. This is one of the windows that are proposed in lieu of blinds for the faculty room upstairs, which gets really heavy sun in the afternoon. So our intention is to do five windows that have the SWMHS logo in the middle. This is the first one. We're going to try and go with the theme with the letter. I don't know how lucky we'll be. But the kids did a good job. And if anyone doesn't know how this is done, we do not stain glass. The glass comes, the way you see it, each piece is hand-cut by the students with my expert assistance. Each piece of glass is wrapped with what is like a tape. It's called copper foil. So each individual piece of glass is wrapped with copper foil, and the copper foil then holds the solder, which is what holds the piece together. It needs a frame. It does have channeling on the end, but I will get a wood frame before we can hang it. Otherwise, they'll be nothing to hang it from.
Ms. Bloom, how long does it take to make something that size?
We actually worked on it, I believe, for three semesters because the kids, you know, a little bit of cutting, grinding, it's a process. After the glass is cut, each piece has to be ground to perfection. The better you cut, the less grinding that has to be done. I would probably say a window like this would take maybe 20 hours or thereabouts to complete. Half an hour ago, it was in my bathtub being washed, so...
Now, these are intended to go where?
There's a faculty room in the new D wing upstairs that has that, you know, really faces the eastern side of the building and gets a lot of light, so...
I know two of my daughters took your stained glass class over the years. I wanted them to take the auto mechanics, although I regret that they have not, but they'll have many stained glass pieces on...
If they need to know how to change a tire, ask Mr. Brown's daughter. She did mine. But we're going to present this once I get it framed, and hopefully we'll get them hung one at a time, and we'll get a little bit of relief up there for the teachers from this...
Very nice. Thank you.
Okay, moving along to gender. Everybody should receive the monthly technology work order, monthly maintenance work order, and the monthly construction manager reports. Anybody have any questions on any of the items in those reports?
I have a question. Not about these items, though. I don't want to get into a long conversation, save it for later, but you received an email from Mr. Vokrol. Can we put that in here as official correspondence and include it in our minutes?
Yes, I received an email from Mr. Vokrol that I think I emailed to the board.
Right. Oh, you didn't get one? Miss Emilio didn't?
I don't know. I have it. I'll send it to you. So just remind me to do that. I have it on my computer. Yes, and I was going to talk about that in a minute.
I figured, but I wanted to get it in correspondence.
Sure. Absolutely. Yep. Okay. Fair enough. We didn't have any minutes for this meeting to approve. Our student council representative, Brittany New Wiki, what's happening on campus?
Well, right now, well, student council is doing penny wars, which is to raise money for each individual class. And...
Hold on, we'll get you set up.
That's all student council's doing right now, but National Honor Society is doing a fundraiser for the pet food drive from their collecting paper towels and food for the animal shelter. And besides that, the class of 2013 is preparing for faculty wars, which is a fundraiser for their class, which should be a fun event in the beginning of April.
Good. Thank you. Do we have a parent involvement represented?
None.
Okay. District ballots, Ms. Limbo?
Yes, Mr. President. The following are the high school seniors who have achieved top-10 status based upon their grade point average. Steven Buscar, valedictorian. Jamie John, salutatorian. Nicholas Zamretta, Eric Sherman, Dana Quinn. Senzana Perub, former Patel. Shannon McKenna, Kristen Batko. Brianna Hittai. A great big job well done to the 38 San Soro Upper Elementary fifth graders who participated in the board of education meeting held on March 2nd as part of the Let the Children Lead program. The students were chosen by submitting an essay as to why he or she would want to be a part of the program. After the essays were judged, 38 students were picked to participate, and each were provided with a position, board member, central office administrator, et cetera, for the meeting after first being given a few training sessions led by Dr. Alphano, Ms. Sutherland, Mr. DeAndrea, and Ms. Brady in order to become familiar with policy and procedure. The board and administration was proud to welcome these five students and congratulate them on fulfilling their roles as future leaders. Thanks to the generous hearts of the Wilson School students and staff, $1,200 was collected for the Haitian Relief Fund. As always, the Wilson family reaches out to eight children and their families for suffering hardships. Kindness was contagious at Truman School from January 19th through February 1st when the students, staff, and parents participated in a kindness and justice challenge. During this time, teachers and parents recorded random acts of kindness. The project generated a lot of excitement and support with the students and engaged in a total of 3,513 acts of kindness. Integrating this activity into the math curriculum, students were given data and the task of predicting how many acts of kindness would be completed by Truman School students. Congratulations to third graders Damian Gonzalez, Jason Lenson, Anavi Shah, and Megan McCray, who were the winners of the contest with a prediction of 3,500 acts of kindness. Special thanks to the guidance counselor, Mrs. Villanueva, for planning and coordinating this worthwhile character education project for Truman School. During the month of February, Arlet School collected $2,738 in spare change for the Leukemia and Monphoma Society School and Youth Program. The Leukemia and Monphemia Society is the world's largest volunteer health organization dedicated to funding blood cancer research, education, and patient services. Congratulations to Ms. Boras' first grade class, who brought in the highest amount, followed by Ms. Pedudo's second grade class, bringing in the second highest amount of spare change. All the money collected will help local patients and thousands of other, thousands of others fight blood cancers, which causes more deaths than any other cancer among children and young adults under the age of 20. Arlet School had their own version of the Super Bowl when, two weeks before the Super Bowl, students were asked to donate a can of soup. They chose either the Colts or the Saints donation containers, checked daily at lunch to see if their team was winning the Super Bowl. At the end of the two weeks, the students were asked to estimate how many cans had been collected, with Mrs. Comerford's third grade class counting the cans of soup. Congratulations to the four winners, most of whom were first graders, who each received a Dr. Seuss book. The final score, Colts 148 and the Saints 150, for a total of 298 cans of soup. This was truly a super, Super Bowl. Middle school students Alyssa Vistromovich and Selena Siri were selected to perform with the 2010 Region Two Intermediate Course. The performance, which was held on Saturday, February 27th, was well-attended and extremely well-received by parents, musicians, and teachers from throughout the central Jersey area. Both girls signed with many outstanding student vocalists from other areas of middle schools, including East Brunswick, Edison, and Howell. Congratulations to Alyssa and Selena, their families, Mrs. Malara, portal director, and the Sable Middle School Music Department for yet another outstanding job. 14 Sable War Memorial High School DECA students competed against 1,533 other DECA students, and we had five winners. These winning students placed in the top 10 for the state of New Jersey and will receive medals. They are Ravi Trivedi, Anuj Tehati, Calvin Tyson, Milvian Preetu, and Demetrius Pennani. The Sable DECA students have won a total of 38 medals this year. Percentage-wise, we are one of the top-winning schools in New Jersey. Congratulations to all these students who worked very hard preparing for these competitions and were determined to be the winners. Congratulations also to Sable teachers Maria Kilduff and her daughter Erin Kilduff, who were recently inducted into the St. Thomas Aquinas College Hall of Fame on January 29th. Maria's husband, Robert, was also inducted. They each received a wonderful award. Maria Kilduff is a member of the class of 1979 and is a Spanish teacher at Truman School. Erin Kilduff is a member of the class of 2007 and is a special education teacher at Arlet School. Robert Kilduff is a member of the class of 1979 and an inspector at the Jersey City Police Department. They are the first family inducted into the Hall of Fame in the college's history. This is quite an honor for the Kilduff family. That concludes our highlights. Mr. President?
I just want to point out, in case anyone didn't notice, that our own Mrs. Backo's daughter achieved a top-10 status as a high academic achiever in the school, and I think that's quite an accomplishment. And please relay our congratulations to her. Okay, Dr. Alfonso, can you take us to the report, please?
I'll try to do as good a job as Jen did last week, but I'm not sure I'll be able to...
We offered her a contract.
I know. Buildings and grounds. NJEA NJN Production is coming to the high school cafeteria on April 15th. That's a special program, and they will do a nice story on how well our cafeteria is doing right now for the new cafeteria, so I think that's a good thing. A building use for the high school gym is on the addendum for a baseball camp. Okay? That's big. That's on the addendum. Any questions with Section 1? With none, moving to 2. Finance, A through L are regular resolutions. M is a revision to the Title I Salary Grant due to maternity, so obviously we had to make an adjustment so that we could spend the money. N is an advertisement for a 54-passenger bus. O is participation of students to attend the Millsix County Arts High and Middle School for school year 2010-11. Student recognition banquet honoring is Brianne, who is grade 12. Q is a transition evaluation services, which are professional services under the Special Education Department. Moving to page 3 is additional high school life skills, teachers to provide additional high school life skills, which is also part of the Special Education Title IV program. There is a change on T. Please make it. Change order number 13, which is a Gibson plumbing, is not 1,000, it's $7,299. That's $7,299 for the high school renovation. Change order number 76 is the Chong Ring, amount 3683. V, please withdraw V. We need special wording for that, which we'll get for the next regular board meeting. W is the renovation of the visitors' bleachers, which is going to cost us about $104,000. That came a little bit under what we thought it was going to cost. X, Y, and Z are all on the addendum. One is a disposal of equipment. It's a... Y is a resolution authorizing us to purchase some awards and plaques that we always do every year. And Z is a contract with land to do some... The electrical panel, which just blew out there. It seems like every time we have a major storm, we really have to reconfigure a lot of our computer equipment. We're having a lot of problems, especially at the UES. That's why our email and things like that have been going down. I think we've had, thank God, not too much damage. Some schools had some major problems up north and even down here, so... Any other questions with Section 2?
Mr. Mackinon?
Thank you, Mr. Shat.
Dr. Alfonso has directed to Mr. DeAndrea.
Sure.
The bids were... You advertised in the paper for bids on the Wilson Plumbing for the heating system. I noticed it in the paper. One of those bids due, and...
If I remember correctly, the 23rd, we're opening them up.
23rd?
Yes.
Thank you.
It's next week sometime, but I believe it's the 23rd.
Have there been any bids submitted so far?
No. Usually then I'll come until the day of.
Thank you. Mrs. Say?
Two items, first of all, on the bills list. I need to abstain on a check for the Arts and Education Council and Premier Printing Solutions. The second part is, Mr. Mackinon wanted me to give an update on the high school construction. Hopefully, this will be one of the last updates I give on the high school construction. We have completed all major phases of renovations here at SWMHS. I know that the staff celebrated on March 1st with a huge cake about this bid that says we're finally done. All the portions of the building are open. Students are now back into this portion of the building, and we're looking to remove the trailers as soon as possible. We're very happy with the way the building came out. Basically, the only things that are outstanding at this point are the punch list items going through. I know we've got a couple of issues with some firearm horns and strobes that we're still working on, some ceiling tiles. But once we get past the punch list items, we can finally put this item, put this project to bed. We're really, really happy with the way it has turned out, and we're very relieved that it is finally over. I really want to thank the high school staff, Mr. Brown, and the high school administration. I know he's not here to hear me thank him. But I really want to thank the high school staff, the high school administration, for putting up with this project over the last four years. I know it has been extremely tough on the staff that's here. I know it's been extremely tough on the students that have been here, going through this building, having to be rerouted, having to deal with firearms going off during classes, and all the other things that accompany construction. And I just hope that you realize now that it has truly been worth it. We've got a facility here that's going to be benefiting students for many, many years to come, and I really believe it's a world-class facility, and I'm really excited about the potential.
Thank you, Mrs. Say. Dr. Alfonso?
Moving to Section 3, non-certified. We have termination, a retirement, a few unpaid personal and medical leaves, an employee suspension, a change in salary due to a black seal license, professional day approvals. And at the end is a new employer, employment of a computer technician to replace someone who left approximately two months ago. And on the addendum is another custodian to replace a custodian that we just released. Any questions with Section 3? With none, moving to 4, personnel certified. Pregnancy leave, unpaid family leave, a correction to tutorial program, which is an adjustment. D is professional days. That's a few pages. If you move to page 7, E is the teacher substitute list. If you look at the addendum, there are three additional names on the addendum on the substitute list. Any questions with Section 4? With none, moving to 5. We have four policies. I do want to make a comment on the one policy. We have policy 3327, which is relations with vendors. There's no change since the last meeting. 5113, attendance, absence, and excuses. There are no changes since the last meeting. Moving to page 19, policy 6114, there is a minor change, and this is due to the county superintendent. I went to a meeting and the requirement, we had to change the wording a little bit, where it says, "Beginning November," it should be October, anything, I believe that's blue, "October 2010." And then it also, we added, "In one fire drill per month, including summer months, where a school is open for instructional programs." For example, we run the UES, we're going to have to run fire drills, a minimum of one a month, actually two, because this summer, it's basically, they do two a month, because we do run summer school and the middle school, we're going to have to run two. So that's really the only change with policy 6114. Moving to policy 6142.13 on page 21, HIV prevention, there is no change to that policy. Any questions with Section 5?
I have a question. It's not about a change, though. It's about the policy. I probably didn't notice it last time. Page 16. If you look at the first paragraph after J, it says, "No pupil in grades kindergarten through H shall be permitted to leave the school," et cetera, et cetera. Does that mean that in grades nine through 12, you're allowed to leave on your own without a parent?
No.
It doesn't?
No.
So why is that specified there just for K through 8?
Because that was what was required by the statute with regard to wording, but we don't let children leave.
Some schools do allow seventh and eighth graders to leave.
Some districts.
Some districts, not schools. Some districts do. And they're saying in this that you're completely prohibited.
Right, but if I was a parent and I looked at this policy, the first thing I would think, oh, I don't have to go in and sign my child out if they're in grade nine through 12. I just don't think that...
Right. Just reading that, that's what I would think.
Can we just strike the kindergarten through eighth grade and just say, "No pupil"?
We can't.
Well, we have pupils that are 18 years old, so you have to specify that. You're 18, you can sign yourself out.
True.
I don't see anything wrong with the way it's worded, personally, with that kind of issue.
Yeah. If you leave it the way it is, I think it's fine.
If it comes up, then we'll change it. We'll remember.
That's the minimum requirement.
That's been in the policy for...
Yeah, I know. I said I knew it wasn't a change.
What's in the handbook? I took a handbook.
Yeah. They have to sign them. Any other questions with Section 5? With none, moving to Section 6. We need to have a discussion because regarding the school calendar, in Section 6, a new school election date came out today for the 2010-11 school year. And basically, it is in right in the middle of the week that we were saying that we were going to have off for the 2010-11 school year, which is the 22nd through the 29th of April. They are moving the election next year, not this year, April of 2011, from the 19th to the 27th, from a Tuesday to a Wednesday, to accommodate Passover. My first question to the board is, and I think I know your answer, do you want to change the recess due to the fact that we would be off if we didn't and the election, we'd be off during the election?
Well, what happens if they vote in the schools and the school is closed that day? They open up the school at their expense?
Who is "they"? We do.
The board of elections, we do.
Yeah, we do.
It's ours.
Oh, it's the school board election, okay.
Right. It's the school board election.
So the question is whether we want to keep it that week or move it to the week prior. And that holiday will encompass, that week will encompass the Friday?
It will, it will...
The week before Easter versus the week...
Right. It's the week before Easter. And it would have Good Friday in it. So that's the first question. Now, we've kind of kicked it around. We found out that not having school during the election is not a good idea.
We learned that like five years ago, right?
Right. We got hit pretty hard with that because the vote, the turnout was very low, and we... But again...
Did it change the vote since?
No.
Dr. Alfonso, are we confident that this is final, or is this just a floating suggestion?
I think it's final.
Okay.
I thought the election was going in November.
Well, that requires an act of...
When we met with the board of elections, they indicated to me that they had gotten guidance from the state to plan on the school board elections of 2011 being in November, and that's what they were gearing towards.
I don't, I, there was no guidance. It was a suggestion. I don't know that there's anything definitive on that.
Maybe we should remove the polls for the schools, and that's an issue.
Then we went...
Well...
I have a, I have a comment. I would like to see the vacation, the recess, a week before anyway, for two reasons now, because of the election and also because it includes Passover, and...
Yes.
So I think that it's...
Well, it does include Passover.
Right.
Would be nice.
Which would be nice, because you're taking on both religions. You're taking on two groups.
And that was an issue, I thought, previously, not too long ago, about not accomplishing both of them.
Right.
But every time we do it before, people always complain, too, that they don't have the day after Easter off. And that's always...
That's always been the biggest complaint, of doing it before, because they have to go to school the day after.
And that was my other suggestion, when, because we would be, we would only be having five days off because of Good Friday, we could take that Easter Monday off. And I did hear a lot of complaints back five years ago about that Easter Monday.
Well, you have, let's first, is the board, does the board want to first move the break from, and amend it as such, because I already have a copy here. We will amend it, that we will go instead of the 22nd to the 29th, the 18th to, right now, the 22nd. We're moving it before.
What Easter is the 24th?
And Easter is the 24th.
Easter is the 24th.
Yes.
Can we change it to include the Monday?
Well, let's first find out whether or not we want to move it, move it before.
It depends on Monday, doesn't it?
Well, I, I, I have no preference, so if you want to do it all in one shot. I was thinking also that we might want to give, rather than the Easter Monday, we might want to do, like originally I had it, is to give another day in February. It is a long stretch between February, which is the middle of February, all the way to the end of April. A lot of districts do four-day weekends there.
Saturdays and Sundays.
Right, and, and there's a benefit.
Yes, Saturdays and Sundays.
Otherwise, there's a benefit for the school being closed for the four days, isn't there?
Part of it.
Isn't there a health benefit for the schools being closed four days, that at that time there's a lot of flu, a lot of colds going on, that at least everybody stays home, the school cleans out?
Yeah. Well, that was the original intent back when. They said, you know, when they used to give the February break, a lot of people were saying, well, that's going to... We don't like to do too many days because it's too close to the ESPOs. It's too close. Now testing is pushed deep. You've got to remember, too, guys, we have testing like two weeks after this for New Jersey ASK and all these other, you know, now they push it into May, so there's a lot of testing going on in May. So it's a double-edged sword. Whatever, whatever you guys want to do, I'm fine with it. My assumption is you want, you want to have school to be open when...
On Election Day.
On Election Day. So that much, we agree on.
Well, the decision is made, then, we move it to the week prior, and I don't see more discussion of that.
But the thing is, do we want to, now, we're picking up a day.
Right.
And you know we're gonna have a snow day. So to say, we might as well leave, me personally, I would leave the seventeenth and the twentieth as your, as the end of your school year, and tack on another day off during the year, whether it be the day after Easter, which, you know, six days is six days, or you basically do the February, do an extra day in the February break, make it Friday, Monday, or make it Monday, Tuesday, you could give Memorial Day, a lot of schools are giving four-day Memorial Day weekend.
Go simple, Cass. Add the day on to the Monday after Easter, or tack the day on, put a day in on February. Would you, I don't have kids in a school district.
I go Easter Monday.
I go Easter Monday.
Okay. Next item.
All right, so, all right, so let me write that down, so that we're running...
February is a short month anyway.
So it's the eighteenth to the twenty-fifth, instead of the twenty-second to the twenty-ninth. And that's the only adjustment.
I was going to Easter parties, and recuperate on Friday.
Thank you.
Eating too much chocolate.
Okay. Okay, moving right along. Thank you very much, that was relatively painless. Special services, we have the regular various services and placements, one through nine. Any questions with section six? With none, section seven, co-curricula, use of a building, the auditorium for a musical, these are the dates, as listed on page twenty-six. Change the date of a sixth-grade social, use of the facility, the high school gym again, for a fundraiser, for students versus faculty, on the nineteenth of May. Unpaid coaching aides are also within this, freshman class fundraiser, faculty wars, at the bottom of page twenty-six. F is a Truman School Family Night. G is the volleyball marathon. H is the chaperones for the senior class trip. And one chaperone, if you look at the addendum, Vanessa Sebastian is going to be replaced by Miss Tar. Okay? That's just a quick change, and R, J, K, and L are also on the addendum. Now, there's a History Honor Society Club, Eisenhower Family Reading Night, and a High School Parent Workshop, which is March twenty-fourth, two thousand and ten. Any questions with section seven? With none, moving to eight. Support services, transportation policy, there's a, there's a, two resolutions on the top. C, please include the word on C retroactively, after the word approved, the Board of Education will approve retroactively the use of the bus for that fundraiser. Again, I spoke to Mr. Mackinon, I apologize, there are two retroactive trips here, it's just error, and we'll try to not make that happen again. And same thing with the big trip, then, where it says retroactively. And you have six field trips that are listed on pages twenty-eight and twenty-nine. Mr. Mackinon, that concludes my report.
My pleasure, welcome.
Okay, Mr. Syatt.
Mrs. DeAndre, I just need to abstain on finance F as well, that's also for the Arts and Education Council.
Mrs. Backo.
For page twenty-eight D, where we're, somebody's using our school buses, we have the other cost of salary and fuel. Do we ever charge a use when we lend out buses, or we always just charge salaries and fuel?
Well, that amount, and this came up once before from a member of the public that asked about our use of the buses for this function. And in that, correct me if I'm wrong, in that fee, there's a wear and tear estimation and a charge for the bus and that type of thing. You asking like a rental fee?
They asked you a question?
Well, I guess, no, it's like, I know the borough does it, they charge when they use like police cars, they put on a fee for the use of the car. Does anybody else use our buses besides this? Do we do this frequently? Is this the only, we don't do?
We don't do a lot of them. No, not a lot.
I mean, maybe, I don't know if we want to alter this particular request, but we want to amend policy, and maybe look at doing the flat mileage rate for miles driven. Because mileage typically would include the wear and the tear as well as the fuel.
Whatever the Board pleases.
In addition to the other fees.
I don't, I don't...
It would substitute for the fuel, but it would be in addition to the driving salary.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, I think Kevin can hold the respect, it's not that big a deal right now, mileage for us, we rarely deal with it.
This is the only...
I think this might, maybe one other time we use it, but I don't, this is not a huge issue for us. And they ask every year, basically, we do exactly the same thing. So if you want to change it, we, I'm dealing with an epizism policy, so if you want to, if you want to, if you want to, if you would like, if you would like to change the policy, I certainly will take a look.
If we want to change the policy for one time, you know, we would do that every time.
Right.
So if you want to draft up language, we'll take a look at it.
Yeah. What's the board's pleasure? If the Board wants to make that change, to include, or to include wear and tear, we can, if not, leave it as is. I'm just offering a solution to the question.
This is a bus that's going from the middle school to the temple and back.
Yeah, I was just asking if we, if we ever, we rent out our vehicles frequently, like a mile?
Practice, please, on that one. Okay, any other questions from the Board before I open up the public for agenda items? If not, at this time, I'd like to open up the public on agenda items only, if there are any questions or comments about items on the agenda, please come up and state your name and address for the record, be mindful, I will open it up again for the public if any business and need to come before the Board. Anybody from the public on the agenda items? Nobody from the public, then I'll close for agenda items, and I'll entertain a motion to accept a file as superintendent's report.
So move.
And your second?
Second.
Now, you will call over.
Mrs. Backo.
Yes.
Mr. Bishada. Yes. Mr. Syatt.
Yes, with the extension noted.
Mr. Limbo.
Yes.
Mrs. Stranland.
Yes.
Mr. Macinon.
Yes. Background information, as members of the public have been following our efforts to try to relocate the voting polls from our schools, we met with Mr. Vorprel and Mr., I forget, Mrs. Backo, the name of the gentleman.
Frankel.
Frankel, head of the Election Commission Committee in Middlesex County, they came to say, we'll talk to us, and they were supposed to get back to us in the February, and they did, they sent an email, and they, what they did is they looked at all of our locations that we had issues with, which are basically all our schools, and they came back with a suggestion that they were gonna move polling District One, which is the biggest district at Wilson School, which caused, caused, relieved some of the traffic issues we had there, and relocate that, at least, to the Mickey Dolan Recreation Center. And then they were going to move some polls from within the buildings of the locations that was recommended by the, say, well, police department, they did a safety assessment of the buildings. I know we were looking for more, I think our initial goal was to remove all the polls out of all the schools, and although that was very aggressive, obviously, we met a lot of resistance, and not on a lack of effort on our time, we went to two of the freehold meetings with some contingent of parents, plus we met with the Board of Elections as well. My feeling of this is, they explained to us very eloquently, I think to a point of being unequivocal, that they're not interested or do not want to. And they do have some valid reasons that I was unaware of when they did make their presentation to us of moving the polls out of all the schools. My feeling is, having been involved with this from when Mrs. Backo enlisted my assistance with, or participation with her, that we've, we've made, we've got our foot in the door, and now just one of two things can happen, and now we've enclosed that door by still trying to pursue this, or we can take this as a small game, watch the next election, and then revisit this issue again since we opened the doors. It's my feeling, and certainly my feeling only, that I think it's time to cut bait and press on. We made, they made a small concession, and I think this was a lot for them to come to say, well, I think they were realizing that we were not gonna go away on this. Let's see what happens with the next couple of elections coming up in April, and the follow-on election in November, and then revisit it again, and that's my recommendation to the Board, and I'd like to hear your opinion, anybody. So I, Ms. Backo, because I know that she took this charge on, and I don't think she's happy with the result, but...
No, I, actually, I thought at the last meeting you had said they were going to take all the polls out of Wilson, that's how I understood it, so that has changed as well.
That's what our request was to them, that we wanted all the polls out of Wilson, we thought that was gonna be, and certainly what Mrs. Baumann, when she was at the meeting, talked about. And that's what we left, that was what we want, wanted them to look at that, and they came with all their maps, and we said, that's what we want, all the polls out of. They came back and said they're willing to take the biggest poll out of it. So we can revisit this again and get the same answer, or again, we can wait and see what happens, and say, look, you know, they helped us however, we still have some issues, and revisit it again in the future. And that's, that's where we are, and it depends, I guess, how much energy we want to expend in this, and how many energies we're gonna make in the process.
We've been doing this since two thousand and six, I think they...
Well, this is the first move, I think we're...
That we've gotten at all, for since, so I guess, I'm very disappointed, I'm telling that much, that they wouldn't even consider it, even if they just even started with the entire school instead of just one poll, I think, I still don't really see the logic, but I agree, I mean, let's revisit it in the future. The one question I do have, you mentioned the police, it coincides with the police assessment, do you have a copy of that police assessment?
Yes, I do, I did get a copy from the chief. But here, here's my take on this, and I'll say this publicly because it's the truth. And I shared this with our elected officials on the other side of town. I'm not happy with the way this worked out, because we went to the Borough Council, we asked for their help, and they articulated verbally that they were gonna help us, when we asked in a resolution, all of a sudden, the police were tasked with doing the assessment of the polls. This report was given to the Board of Elections, but not us, so they had it coming here. I caught wind of it and requested to our business administrator to get a copy, it was like a no-intent. And what the police basically did, because one of our concerns was that the parents articulated was the safety, so of course, the police went out there and looked at it and said, you know, well, if we move this to this place inside the school versus here, if we put a barricade up over here, that's hard for us to argue against that, you know, that's not gonna work, and the police did the assessment. And the police didn't do that assessment on their own, they were directed to do that by, for the people that they, they work for, that's the council. So the odds were stacked against us from the get-go on this. We made a little concession here, we moved a little in their direction, we'll revisit it again, but, you know, if we don't have the support of the council, you know, we're gonna be spinning our wheels here. And that's, that's my feeling. Any other, anybody else from the Board?
Mr. Macon.
Mr. Bishada.
I would just suggest that when we do have elections in our schools, that our administrators document any incidences, like Mrs. Baumann has done with some of the incidences pertaining to people wandering through the school, seeing what their whole high school looked like, which Wilson was back in.
Right.
And I would request that maybe we could have documentation submitted by each school of any incidents that occur as proof of what we've been trying to do.
And I agree, and in the police report, if you read the report, and I will get everybody and a member of the Board, and I don't think, it was an internal document, but I have it, so I'll make copies of it. They did a very meticulous review, and they looked at things, and on where the police officer is positioned, you know, how to gain entry to the polling area, and some of their suggestions didn't make sense, and we looked at it from strictly a security perspective, you know, so that answered our concern about, about the safety, so that's hard to go up against, and I just, it just rubbed me the wrong ways, I didn't get access to that report, and it's our schools, so, and that wasn't by chance, so, and I made that known to those involved. So, anybody else, any discussion about the polls?
No, I agree with that, I think at this moment, we're beating a dead horse.
And we like to beat, well, we like to beat dead horses, Mr. Mac, or Mr. Limbo. Okay.
Never met a dead horse, really.
The last thing I wanted to talk about is, I had the opportunity, and I would say the pleasure of last night, I spent a couple hours with my counterpart in South Amway, the South Amway Board President, Miss Cindy Zammuth, and I had met previously with the South River Board President, and had a, you know, very frank conversation on, we need to do more together, and, you know, they all agreed that if you come across the South River Bridge, go through Sable and South Amway, it costs us five miles, and went to three school districts, and we're duplicating a lot of things. So there's a couple of areas that we looked at that we couldn't do together, and one of them, and we're doing some of those right now, we do share with South River some special, special needs teachers, visually impaired, those types of things. Looking at, and I have a list of things that we're gonna share with our VAs from both districts on, special maintenance people, like specialists, HVAC, mechanics, plumbers and electricians, that we can share and split the cost of those things. Transportation, to identify students in their districts that are going to outer district schools, and I had a conversation with Stoffey about this, that we're sending to the same school, but there may be two kids on their bus and one kid on our bus, and we're paying forty thousand dollars for a bus when we're going to the same place and we're a couple of miles apart. So this is a conversation that was probably ten, twenty years overdue, to start working, and of course, the state of economic affairs right now, you know, kind of brings us home that we need to be talking about these things. Of course, everybody is protective of their, of their district, but the reality is, we have a really big district with two very small districts on either end of us, and that's the reality of, I know, South Amway, we have more students in some of our schools than they have in the entire district. So they're looking at those types of things, and it's good that we broke the ice, this is a very pleasant individual, and we had a very good time talking about the issues of, she's been on the Board there for fifteen years, and President is ten, and she still seems to have a good sense of humor, so, so I just wanted to share that. Any future meetings that we meet, I'll let you know, any information that our professionals or other Board members can think of that we can do jointly together, we have two receptive parties that are willing to do those things, and I think there's some serious savings there if we take a look at that. Anybody else have anything for background before we press on with the discussion items? Mr. Clark is not here for, he's helping out, an older gentleman that they helped evacuate out of Webber Avenue, and he's helping to relocate that person right now, so he couldn't make it to the meeting. For discussions, you talked about Snow Make-Up Day, Dr. Afana, let's read it.
Yes, I'll just, right now, our one-hundred-and-eightieth day is June twenty-fourth, which I believe is a Thursday. The Board has decided not to go the one-hundred-and-eightieth second day, which is contractual, so right now, God willing, no more snow, or any more days, or typhoons, or hurricanes, or whatever else they're gonna bring in. Graduation for the high school will be the twenty-fourth, and for the middle school will be the twenty-third. If we get another day off, we'll just push it deeper into June until we obviously don't have any more days, or start pushing into the second week, the last week of June. So that's the way we're gonna keep it, and we'll just hope for the best. So again, the twenty-fourth of June is the one-hundred-and-eightieth day, and the one-seventy-ninth day would be for the middle school, which you don't have to go, that would be their graduation date, which would be the twenty-third of June, and teacher's last day would be the twenty-fifth, if our law goes well.
Okay, next item, Mr. DeAndre, you want to brief the Board about what our plan is once the Governor spoke today, we heard what he said, the numbers that we're interested in won't be out, have to be out to us by Thursday, is that correct?
By Thursday, the Governor.
Okay, and you want to explain the plan that the Finance Committee discussed to the rest of the Board?
Due to the short timeline that we're experiencing, we need to adopt a tentative budget by Monday. Monday is the final date to finalize your budget, tentative budget. We're hopeful that the Finance Committee is meeting Friday afternoon to discuss what changes need to be made based on the financial information and the state aid, hopefully that we receive either tomorrow or Thursday.
Let's stop right there. Finance Committee, Mr. Limbo, Mr. Bishada, Friday afternoon? Can we make it as later as possible for me to get back to Sable?
Anytime, please. Whatever's convenient for me.
Could four-thirty, is that, can we, can we do four-thirty? Are you saying no is...
Supposed to be really nice.
Okay. Four-thirty is, I can't get back any earlier on Friday from down there, so. All right, Mr. Bishada? That's slower. Okay. Go ahead.
So based upon that, we have to adopt a tentative budget on our Monday evening. The hope is, is that by Friday, we will have a budget to present to the Finance Committee, and hopefully send to the Board that budget before the committee actually sees that report. If there were any changes made at the Finance Committee, we'll send you an email that evening notifying you of those changes, so that you're aware of them for Monday. The timeline is short, we were, we were hoping to have some information today, that they were gonna change the budget timeline, but they did not, so we have to adhere to them. And then we have the following week, March thirtieth, which is a Tuesday evening, the public hearing and the adoption of the budget. So everything has to happen within, within a two-week timeframe, it's very tight, but we have no choice but to follow the guidelines that have been issued.
Now, the Finance Committee has met five or six times, Mr. Bishada, we met, to discuss these things, and, you know, we're cognizant of worst-case scenarios, and we looked at if we got flat aid from the state, if we got a five percent reduction, a ten percent reduction, a fifteen percent reduction. I noticed that if you read the papers, and one of the members of the Public brought this to my attention, you know, that many of the superintendents of the districts are telling the doom and gloom story, and some of them have taken... them to do them the gloom story, and some of them have taken some actions, and we kind of are sitting back, looking at this thing, and, well, let's wait and see the numbers. When I was talking to the South Amway President last night, they spend about $1,200 more a student than we do, and they're very concerned, because the same cut to them is going to be much more severe to them than it's going to be to us. We're sitting in a situation where we don't, everybody's guessing, and that's where we are right now, but based on our history, efficiency, that adequacy issue, and then of course, the other issue is how much the district has left in surplus, is going to be factored into what kind of cut that the state gets. And for us to come out, and I know I made some comments in the suburban article about a week ago, about, you know, if we got a 15% cut, that's going to be significant. Right now, I think our state aid is about $22 million, is that correct? So you look at 15%, you look at about $3.3 million, that's a significant cut. And it's hard to sit here and say that, you know, we're going to press on, like, oh, you say we're not, and that's the reality of it. I am very cognizant of, I understand what impacts things have on the school. The first thing is the kids, and I know everybody says, we're not going to be sitting here saying that kids are going to suffer like you, or some people running around saying, we're going to do everything we can to ensure that whatever cuts are made are not going to directly affect what's happening in the classroom. This is a school district. And we're very sensitive to those types of things. But we have to find out and see what those numbers are going to be, before we start, you know, alarming people, and start letting people worry about things, and we don't know what that information is going to be. But the Finance Committee has been looking at all the worst-case scenarios, and when we find out those numbers, we're going to have a budget that we're going to send to the rest of the board. Everybody on the board has the full budget, and has had that, and there's only one minor change to that, I think, was the benefits.
Yes, and I highlighted that in the, uh...
In one of the emails.
Yeah, they saw it, so they knew the changes.
After the Finance Committee meets on Friday, we're going to fire off to the boards, at least you have something to look at and discuss on Monday, and not just put it in front of your face on Monday. You know, I think one of the most frustrating things for me to meet on the board is how this state does these school budgets. It'll let you know the numbers on Thursday, Monday you have to have your temporary budget, and it's amazing, it's mind-boggling how this is done, but we have scenarios set up based on what those numbers are going to look like, and we will provide that information. So...
Can I just, excuse me, Mr. Mackenon? For the board meeting on the 22nd, it'll be at Slover, just so that everybody knows, because we need our information, we have to have access to our documents, just in case.
Now, have these been advertised?
They're building...
What's the deadline?
And the time change will be, we'll have to advertise.
Okay, what time are you looking at on the 22nd?
5 o'clock, that's what we did last time. 5:30?
How about meetings is killing me?
5:30.
I just can't get here fast enough. 5:30 is just more recent.
All right, 5:30 is good.
Now, we got our board members there?
Yeah, it'll be an action meeting. But it'll be an action meeting, and the March 30th meeting will be here at 7:30, and I think we should have probably a closed session before that, just in case.
Is there a regular board meeting date?
No.
There's another...
No, but I'm saying we still should have action, because it's the public hearing, if we're going to get here, and then I would say, we do the same as we normally do, at 6:30, closed, because we do have some items that we may, that may crop up, that we've been discussing, and have a regular public hearing at 7:30.
On your highlights on Friday, if you can just go ahead and list those dates and qualifications again, so we don't, so we can figure...
I'll clean all that out.
I make a motion, we approve March 22nd, 5:30 PM Slover School for the adoption of the tentative budget, and 7:30 PM with a closed session at 6:30 PM at the high school to adopt the final budget.
Second?
Mr. Mackenon.
Yes.
Mr. Bishada.
Yes.
Mr. Syaikh.
Yes.
Mr. Limbo.
Yes.
Mrs. Stratt.
Yes.
Mrs. Stratt.
Yes.
And Mr. Mackenon.
Yeah.
Mr. Mackenon?
Yeah.
Just for the public's notice, Mr. Mackenon has mentioned, prior years, we would have budget workshop meetings, there's some people in the audience that have been at them before, on Saturdays early evening, and this year, we didn't have that luxury of having workshop meetings, because of the fact that we didn't know what the state was going to cut. So up in, like, everyone's mentioned here before, the last minute, which will be Thursday, we receive the number, the big number, but we don't know exactly what our district is going to receive as far as a reduction in state aid. That's why we have not had a workshop for the public up until this point, because the sense of having a workshop, and having your input put into it, was negative, it wouldn't have resulted in anything, because we didn't know what type of allotment of capital we were going to have in revenue for the year.
Mr. Mackenon?
Mrs. Mackenon.
Mr. Bishada, I've sat here for five years, and every year, we've had budget public meetings. Every year, our state aid numbers have never been in during those meetings. To hand me a budget on Thursday or Friday, and to hand me a piece of paper and tell me we're going to have a quick meeting on Monday to adopt a budget, I think is really pathetic. No public meetings, the board has never discussed this budget, and now you're asking me to walk in on Monday, 5 o'clock, let's have a quick meeting and adopt a budget. I have gotten comments from many residents about the articles in the newspaper, we have never had our state aid early during the budget workshop meetings. To have no discussion, and to have an expectation that we're going to discuss this and complete it on Monday quickly at 5 o'clock, I think is a little ridiculous.
Well, I think we clear your calendar up until midnight, now let me chime in on that.
Till midnight, it says here we're going to have a quick meeting, 5 o'clock Monday.
It's not going to be quick. First of all, to me, there's two distinctions in the past about not knowing what your state aid was going to be, versus knowing that your state aid may be 15% less, that's a big difference. Secondly, I remember about, about five months ago, asking you to sit on the Finance Committee, and you didn't do any...
Right, and I think that we should have those, I disagree with the Finance Committee meeting and meeting and meeting behind closed doors to discuss a budget, and not bringing it out to the public. And that's why I chose not to sit on the Finance Committee. We had this conversation, I didn't like the way it was done last year, and we had public meetings last year. This year, we haven't had one, and it doesn't matter. You can sit there, and you can make scenarios about how, what's going to happen if the state aid is cut, like we have done in the past, but to have no meetings, and to expect everyone to walk in and just say, yes, this looks wonderful, and walk out in five minutes, I don't think that that's really acceptable.
Well, the Finance Committee is a representation of the board, and we're going to make a recommendation of the board, and we're going to give you the rationale behind the recommendations. And you can do one of two things, you can vote for the budget, or you cannot vote for the budget.
That's right, but to give the rationale on Monday, the date that you have to adopt it, I think it is a little short sighted, and I think it should have been done previous.
But I think this scenario is unique in a sense, and I don't know which budget to put forward, because I don't know what the numbers are going to look like.
And, you know... But it doesn't matter, we were handed a budget, that particular budget that I received in my hands should have been discussed, and it's never been discussed, and now we're adopting it on Monday.
And, you know...
That's the situation today.
Last year, I suggested, I mean, something as big as the budget shouldn't be represented by a board ready. The whole board should be included on something as the budget. I mean, we should not be getting it on Monday, I mean, have to make a decision that fast. I mean, that is a problem, we should have been in the process.
Okay...
Yeah, I mean, I have comments on the budget that I have received, I have questions, and yet we've yet to discuss it.
Mr. Mackenon, hold on one second, let me answer those concerns. I also made it very clear at the beginning of the year, if anybody else recalls hearing this, that I said, you know, this year, we can, since the Finance Committee thing, which did not happen, you ran it last year, you had some issues with it, I said, fine, let's do this as a committee of the whole.
Correct.
Okay, I made that suggestion, I didn't have any takers. I said, okay, let's go back to the committee format, I asked everybody if they wanted to be on the committee, and the only people that volunteered, the only person that volunteered was Mr. Bishada. Okay, and then I said, well, Tom, I'll work with you, okay? So, to me, I have an issue with that, to say, look, I'm asking for people, and I know with your background, and you've done these things before, that your ideal would cheer for budget committee, but you avoided it like what?
Right, because I preferred, right, because I wanted it done in public as a board, as a board, not three people in a room. I wanted the budget done as a board, and I felt even chairing it last year, that there was too much missing by three people sitting in a room, working on it, there was, and then coming back to the board. And I came back to the board at every meeting, when I chaired that committee, to ask for, what direction did you want? I wanted direction, I wanted majority direction. Now we're going to be handed a budget, the three people did, and no one has even discussed anything.
A spin-off of that is that you have a committee that's going to give the rest of the board direction. We're going to tell the board...
On the night of adoption.
Okay, well, you know, it is what it is, you know, when you look at this budget, you understand that, you know, we're very limited to what we're adding to this budget or what we delete from this budget. You know, our heads are typing a lot of items that we, you know, before we start affecting programs and staff. Now, we have these budgets, and I think on Monday, when we present it, if we need to talk about it, we talk about it. If we need to meet again on Tuesday, we'll meet again on Tuesday. Need to meet again on Wednesday, we'll meet again on Wednesday. I mean, it's just, the state gives us these numbers on Thursday, and we've got to have this thing on Monday, I mean, that's the hand we're dealt.
But our numbers are always late, Mike, and we've always discussed the budget as a possibility.
Never at a possible of $3.3 million.
Right, but we've always started the budget, and we've had meetings in December, in January, I mean, it's almost the end of March, and it's never even been presented, and now we're going to present it at 5 o'clock on a Monday, do you think you're going to have a public meeting? Does it need anybody there at 5 o'clock on a Monday?
Well, since I've been on the board, I don't ever remember many people from a public meeting, any public budget meeting, so.
Regardless of how we got here, we're here. And having served on the board now for 16 years, I can tell you that I've yet to find a budget process that really truly works. We've done it by committee, we've done it by board of the whole, we've done it starting out touring every single school building, we've done it where we get the budget, and it's $40,000 of the cap, and we direct the superintendent to cut it. We've done various different scenarios, and ultimately, we haven't found one yet that I think really, really serves us. But be that as it may, we're here at this point. Would that help alleviate the concern?
I'm sure, and another thing I have to remember, too, is every committee meeting is advertised with the superintendent's highlights that everybody gets. So if anybody's ever interested in coming to the Finance Committee meeting, you know when they are, you know they're a meeting.
Actually, I did it last week.
When I got the highlights on Friday, if the meeting had occurred, usually when we get those highlights, like, it's...
Mrs. Mackenon, I would never use the word naive to describe you. Okay? Anybody else?
If I could, I'd just like to follow up on what Mr. Syaikh said. Monday night is only your tentative budget, you do have the full week remaining, and I do know, I've heard from some of my colleagues, that their boards are looking to use that week, because of the short timeframe, to possibly meet and make adjustments. And again, it's all predicated on our numbers, how they come out, that may really push forward as to how far we have to go with this, so you can always use the rest of the week also.
I understand, I'll meet every day of the week that we need to, so the board is satisfied when we point out that the recommendation from the Finance Committee is the best budget that we can put out. I'm willing to do that. The last time we met on a Saturday, if I recall, it was at Slover, there was two people from the public there, and one of them was more fascinated with debating than the budget process, if you recall, so.
And the other part is, too, which the Finance Committee discussed at the last meeting, you start this process, and you do it publicly, and you get to a number, and I know Dr. Alfano pitched the $55 number, if we were to come here tonight with revisions and say, well, now the increase is $45, or it's $65, and then come here next Monday and say, well, now it's $35, a lot of times, the feedback we get from the public is, you guys don't even know what the tax increase is, because it keeps moving it around, how are we supposed to trust your budget? So sometimes, all of that visibility actually comes back to discredit credibility, because we can't come out with a consistent message to the public to help them understand what we're voting on.
So the committee's meeting on Saturday?
Yes.
So how about, can we have a board meeting on Saturday, or is that too early?
Well, you can't advertise it without, can you?
No.
Can you?
Unfortunately, I can't because I'm out of town.
I am also.
Well, see, that's the other issue, too, you know, and we talked about that, too.
We did this once in a week, so we're not...
Okay, let's cut to the chase here, we're adults, okay, because I'm at the point now where I get a little annoyed with this whole process. I'll tell you why, because just this reason, you want to have a committee of the whole, you've got to get people to come here. We're in the middle of a budget crisis, and I'm missing two board members, okay? Think about that, okay? And then if you want to have a committee of the whole, everybody needs to come, everybody needs to be committed to the process, okay? That's why it failed. And I hear everybody say, you know, we just volunteers, and that kind of thing, you know, I'm willing to meet every day of the week if we need to have it, but, you know, let's stop playing games here, okay? We know what we can touch with the budget, we know where we're going, we know what the state aid, when we know what the state aid cuts, we're going to come with the best possible budget. Mr. Bishada, myself, and Mr. Limbo, we're representative of this board, okay? We decided, due to the lack of interest from the rest of the board to do this committee of the whole, we volunteered to do it, we're going to make a recommendation to you. Now you have two choices, folks, you can approve the budget, or you cannot approve the budget. And if you vote no on the budget, you need to explain to my satisfaction why, when you wanted to negate yourself from the process, okay? So, you know, the gloves are off now, okay? Four years I've been here...
I wonder if it differed, that everybody negated themselves from the process.
Nobody wanted to, listen.
No, absolutely not. No, people may have negated from a committee, but I don't remember people on this board turning around and saying, we wanted no part of the budget.
When I talked about the committee of the whole, we started to talk about who's not available this time, who's not available this time. I'm telling you right now, the governor spoke tonight, okay? The governor spoke today...
I can make a sound available that was never, ever, ever presented.
The governor spoke tonight, okay, about what the cuts were going to be. We have this potential cut looming, and I don't have two board members here, okay? So let's put it, let's get real about this.
Okay, but they're not here to speak to themselves, the rest of us are.
But that's the concern, when you have a committee of the whole, if you don't...
I mean, committee of the whole, I would have probably been available, I mean, almost every night.
Did you remember this discussion, or pinch me, or who we talked about this?
I remember discussing having a committee of the whole, and I don't remember any major opposition to it at all, I don't remember anybody saying, no, we don't want to do it. I don't remember anybody objecting, even the two people that are missing.
And I also asked for members to be on other committees, and they said, not me. And again, who wanted to be in it? Myself and Mr. Bishada. Mr. Bishada, you can chime in anytime you want, okay?
Well, I'll tell you the truth, Mr. Mackenon, I'm like you, you know, whenever it comes to doing a task on this board, there's two or three people that do it, and there's a lot of people that sit back and don't do a damn thing.
You're a gentleman, it's tough.
And to be criticized, you know, for the effort that I'm trying to put in to make the district better, I take it as an insult.
Okay, well, let's, Friday, we're meeting as a committee, Monday, we're going to have a tentative adoption meeting. If you want to meet Saturday, we'll discuss that tonight, we can do the public meeting on Saturday. I will clean my schedule for next week, I had plans this weekend, but the budget process is more important. So what do you guys, you want to meet Saturday? We have two board members, you said you can't, right?
Right, yeah, we can't because I'm out of town.
And the other two board members, I don't know if we were able to make it.
I have a commitment to my son's college.
Okay, so then we're going to meet Monday, and then we'll go from there, and we have the whole week. And then surely, the nine of us, surely, the nine of us, within a week's time, can be agreeable on a budget. If we can't, then we don't belong up here, that's my feeling. Any other comments before we move on?
I have to make a comment, because, and I wasn't going to, I really held back, but I'm insulted that two or three board members do everything. I beg to differ.
Well, you're the third, I guess you said.
Yeah. Sorry, Kevin.
And that was really unfair, Tom. That's totally not...
Take a look on this Board, and see how many people are on how many committees on this Board. See who's on most committees on this Board, and see how many people are on one, possibly two committees on this Board.
Being on a committee doesn't necessarily mean that you put, there would be, I was on the curriculum committee my first two years here. We had zero meetings. The Chair of the Committees never met. Just because your name is on a piece of paper on a committee, doesn't mean that you're doing most of the work. It just means your name is on a piece of paper. That's all it means.
Well, if my name is on a committee, I am doing the work. That's the problem.
Tom, I'm not arguing with you that you're not doing the work, or Mike's not doing the work, or any specific person. There's a lot of people here that do work, whether it's behind the scenes, whether it's activities, whether it's at committee meetings. There's a lot of people that do a lot of work. And maybe you don't see what others do. I see what you do.
Yeah, I think, you know, there are committees that are more active than others. And Mrs. Scranton, I agree with what she's saying, is that it's more than just going to meetings, it's the visibility of events, and I know Ms. Scranton is very visible with all the sporting events and those types of things, which are a part of the duties of being a Board Member. But this conversation is probably going to go south if we continue any further. So I would reiterate that we're going to meet as a committee on Friday, and then we will have a public meeting on Monday. And then from Monday, we as a Board will determine whether we need to meet on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
Mr. Mackenon?
Yes, sir.
May I make a suggestion? So we still have two slots on Friday if somebody else would like to show up on the Finance Committee.
Well, we have Mr. Limbo, Mr. Rashad, or myself. We can use one more. Anybody else?
Well, we use one more. I'm saying, if somebody else would like to come, we can still do it. It's not a quorum.
Why can't we do it in public, then, instead of single one person?
Could we advertise? Can't advertise enough time for Friday, can't...
Well, I was just going to comment. Meeting Monday, you won't be able to meet on Tuesday. Don't have to be enough advertising time.
If you're meeting Monday, you won't...
Great mention, that if one of you don't...
Well, you can advertise if the Board is going to meet every day of the week, and then if we don't meet, we don't meet. But I think it's better to play safe that way.
Would you like me to make the advertisement that way? I need to know.
But what do we have to meet?
We may have to, but it'll be safe, and sorry.
Okay, I'll do it.
What's the...
What's it, go back and do it?
Time, place, and then we get the Board to vote on it.
Same place every time.
Right, and we could decide every night about the following day, can't we?
Dr. Alfano, you have a concern?
I think you're just, people from the community look at that being deceptive. You know, which way do I go to, which way don't I go to, are you going to meet, aren't you going to meet? It becomes very confusing.
I'm sorry.
You could post it that there's going to be a public meeting on Monday. And based on the results of that meeting, there may be follow-on meetings to discuss the same thing the rest of the year.
Well, you could do, if you met on Monday, you could meet on Wednesday. You know what I'm saying? You could be on Friday, if you had to.
I like that approach.
I mean, I would...
Now, why do we meet?
What I heard is you're advertising for Monday. You're advertising for Monday, and then on Monday, if need be, you can advertise for Wednesday?
I have to ask, Mr. Rashad.
Is that sufficient notice or nothing?
No, because you're not going to have...
So then it would be wise for us to advertise for Monday and Wednesday as of now?
Well, yes, so why can't we just do Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday? And we could say to keep an eye on the Board, to keep an eye, not the Board, but to keep an eye on the computer, on the website.
Makes sense to me.
It does, or it doesn't?
Well, we have to get the budget resolved. We have to get five members of the Board to agree. And I think we can do it on Monday. Look, if we have to do it every day of the week, then we got issues. So I think, based on my work with the Finance Committee, that we're going to present a budget to you that's going to make sense, based on the current climate.
All right, so Monday, and then if we need to meet again, we can meet on Thursday, because there'll be enough time for advertising.
Mr. Mackenon, if I could, is it possible that if there are people that have concerns or questions about the budget, that they submit it to the Finance Committee so that at least the Finance Committee can look at it on Friday and know what the concerns are, so that the committee can address them on Friday, in anticipation for Monday night, that most questions or concerns can be addressed at that point in time, so everyone's hopefully on the same page, and we're not sitting at Monday night's meeting and having questions that four other people may say, you know what, that makes sense. Why are we doing it? I have to submit a budget. I have timelines. My budget has to be in. I can't tell you if there's any specific penalties. I'm not going to say that. But if people do have questions, would you mind forwarding them to the Finance Committee so that at least they can look at them on Friday, and then be able to say on Monday, we support this, we don't support it, or at least have an open discussion so that everybody's on the same page, to hopefully alleviate Monday night being a total disaster, and everybody hopefully being on the same page.
But if you're only going to go through the budget on Monday night, questions are going to arise on... I would assume the questions will arise on Monday as we go through it, would be the...
Well, my hope is that, I've sent that budget out, I would say, three weeks to a month ago, that at this point in time, if there are questions, they can be forwarded to the Finance Committee, so they at least know, because the Finance Committee's been through the whole budget. And I don't think the goal of the Finance Committee was for Monday night to go line by line. I know we spoke, we were looking at more, these are the areas we touched, which we have already given to the Board and we shared with the community. So we've already kind of done that, as to the areas we've affected in this budget. So if there were any additional ones, at least the committee can address them and be knowledgeable for Monday night, so that things can move in a more productive manner, instead of sitting saying, can we go to page, can we go to page 10, light item, 11 triple zero, whatever? I don't know what that means. If we can do that ahead of time, it'll help make the meeting a much more productive meeting.
So if someone submits a question on page whatever, line, I don't know what it means, they submit that ahead of time, and then what? How do you gain anything? There's no discussion?
But you could, because Monday, because by Friday, the committee can address it. We can either respond to it by email, or address it first thing Monday night, say, these are the list of questions that board members had in concern to the budget, and we'd like to address them first, so that you get that out of the way and keep the meeting moving in a productive manner.
Seems reasonable.
Will you give us what was discussed Friday night before Monday, or you're just...
Well, the goal is that by Friday, I'm hoping to send the budget home before the committee even meets, because we have our courier that's out.
And if there's anything significant...
Anything significant, what we'd like to do is that evening, send an email. As I did in my highlights, I'll give you the specific page, the specific account, and hopefully, some type of description as to what changes made, so that you have a clear indication of what's being done.
Any other discussion? If not, I will open up the public for any business may be to come before the Board.
Job over twelve-ten Harbor Club Drive-Pour-Lin. At the budget meeting starting Monday, will we be assured that the public has the same documentation to read out here that you're reading up here, unlike our meetings?
Yes.
Thank you. As far as deception, right? If the public's at one meeting, and at the end of the night, they decide they need another meeting, right? You know, you haven't deceived anybody, right? You know, the person that's there will come back to the next meeting. Folks, right? If you wondered why we failed budgets in this town, the topic you just spoke about for fifteen minutes is the reason. And we go through this every year at this time, and I come up here and I ask one more time, which I will, because you're on the Board again, and I don't like to ask questions. It puts people on the spot. So I just make statements, make you think about them. But Mike, five years in a row, I've asked you to start this budget process before Christmas. You know, and probably of anybody on the Board, I'd probably least prefer to throw you one to bust, but why not, right? We haven't started it once before Christmas in your tenure on the Board, all right? No need to reply. But if you want to trust me, right? Because I know when you ran on the Board and other people, you've got your finger on the pulse about why the town doesn't trust the process, which is the 12 or 13 people that I'm looking at here. This is the process. You've clearly demonstrated, not only don't you respect, right? You don't want the public's input, right? Because if you did, no matter whether or not the media's got his notice from the state,